See if it worked this time. And we're there, we're good. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining me virtually one more time. I call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:04 on April 21st, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have an agenda. Next item is our public hearing on 2020-2021 operating budgets. We started advertising methods to provide budget feedback on April 6th and you will see that we had different ways of reaching out to other citizens and residents were able to submit feedback via voicemail, US mail, email, and through online form. So far, no budget comments were submitted for public hearing, and I think we keep the feedback method open until Friday, April 24th. And if we receive anything from today till now, Brenda will send the feedback to all of us, and those will be added to the tonight's meeting minutes. So at this time, the public hearing is closed. Our next agenda item is paying our bills. May I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
So moved.
I have motion and second. Any questions? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We pay our bills. The next one is having our acknowledging the receipt of our financial summary reports. May I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any question regarding that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our financial summary report, receiving it. And the next item is our business part of the meeting. And there is a resolution. Dr. Meyer?
Okay.
About that?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Karan. As you know, we're living and working in unprecedented times. Educating students remotely posed unique challenges that our district is meeting in a great way. Many of our school board policies reflect state and federal laws that are currently being waived through action by the government. VSB A recommends that school boards approve this resolution that will temporarily suspend school board policies only as it relates to the district's response to COVID-19. The resolution requires me to notify you when we are suspending a policy in response to COVID-19. Examples of the suspension include instructional days in time and graduation requirements. We're asking you to approve this resolution tonight so that we can continue to move forward.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any questions and discussion?
One, one thing I noticed, unless it's been updated, which I don't, I think I just logged in. On the bottom of page two, second one from the bottom, I think needs to be, the blank needs to be filled in as Montgomery County Public Schools or Montgomery County School Board.
Yes, I mentioned that to Brenda. I think as she is typing or putting it together with our approval, she's going to fix that part. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our resolution.
Okay. Thank you so much for doing that. And next, we're going to give you an update on the, on COVID-19 and how we're responding to the update. Several things have occurred since our last school board meeting, either at the federal state level specifically. And so Mr. Polly will start, and then Mr. Knott, Ms. Whitaker, and Mr. Krantz are here to provide those updates. So Mr. Polly, want to go and get started?
Yes, sir. So I've tried to summarize the multiple pages of guidance that we provided to students. Oh, yeah, we have provided it to families and students, but also to mostly to teachers and to our principals. And so the top statement, I would just call your attention to, I won't, won't read it aloud, but the top statement really comes from one of our principals in an email that he sent, and it just really captures what's driving everything that we're doing online with our continuity of learning. So the few things that we have been doing to change the way we grade student work is for Q4, which is just short for quarter four, student work in Q4, we're asking teachers to informally assess everything that is submitted by students, provide some feedback to students to help them understand things and to gain mastery of the learning, and then to, as far as a grade goes, assign completion grades based on the percentage of work completed within each assignment. We don't think that it's fair in the current environment to grade things based on its correctness or its accuracy. We don't know what kind of help students are getting at home. We don't know if they are getting help or aren't getting help, or if it's their own work, or if it is and they're struggling, and it's just not the same environment. So we felt completion grades were the most, this is all corroborated by work done on a survey with 414 secondary teachers responding and several hundred elementary teachers responding to a similar survey. So this was the will of the vast majority of teachers. And then I held a stakeholder committee meeting with over 50 participants on Zoom, which was very interesting, and they affirmed this decision. And so this is how we're proceeding. We're also saying no grade penalty to students if anything is submitted after due dates. Again, there are limitations outside of students' control and that students, teachers, we're asking them to contact students and parents if there is work not being completed to see what might be holding that up. We don't want teachers to just assign zero for work not being, and we want them to see what is behind for it before they would take that action. You can go to the next slide, Brenda. The next slide has to do with calculating the Q4 and final course grade. It gets, it sounds a little complicated, but we've actually recently, as in the last couple of days, come up with a technology solution to make this much more easy for teachers to manage. So basically, as I said earlier, the Q4 grade is going to be presented or calculated on the percentage of completed work, and then the assignments in portal will be recorded to allow students and parents to see and keep track of these missing assignments. The students' grade at the end of quarter three, we're guaranteeing them to be the lowest grade that a student can receive, and then any work that they do in quarter four will act, will only be able, will only allow that to influence the grade in the positive direction. So students have the opportunity to earn a higher final course grade. They're guaranteed no lower than what it was at the end of course three. Okay, next one. This is where it gets interesting, and we actually have followed suit with what New River Community College started out with, and we know Virginia Tech is doing and Radford is doing, and then many, many, many other universities across the Commonwealth and probably even across the country, I would imagine, we're doing something very similar. So we're providing students with all kinds of options, again, based on the idea, if we don't know, it's not the same environment as face-to-face instruction, and we don't know what kind of resources and support they have at home. So we're giving kids all kinds of options. First, they are welcome to accept the final letter grade that they have earned, A through F, but we're saying if it's A through D, and you'd rather have that recorded as a key for pass, then we will do that. Courses with a grade, a final course grade of F, we're going to automatically expunge, and then they'll repeat the course the following year, so we're holding them harmless on that. And then the option to also retake any course for any reason, if they want to retake the course and earn a higher grade, we wanted to recognize it's not just students who are failing that might want to have their grade removed from the transcript. There may be students that are perhaps even unsatisfied with the B. Maybe they were hoping for an A, and maybe under the current, the former conditions, they would have been able to do it. So we don't know who will take us up on that, but we certainly wanted to give that opportunity. And then the little note below is along the lines of what you all just voted for as the resolution. I'm just pointing out to you here that we have established deadlines in policy regarding the latest date that a course can be dropped with no grade penalty. But there is the caveat in, in our policy that already states the school principal and extenuating circumstances may grant exceptions to these provisions, which means as principal, if a student had extenuating circumstances, I would rather readily offer to just withdraw a course from them, even if it was after the date. So I don't think we get any more extenuating than the circumstances we're currently in. We're just saying as a school division, we're going to provide students with the opportunity to drop courses for which they don't really want the earned grade, and we'll give them the opportunity to retake that, no grade penalty. Next slide, Brenda.
One second. I'm not seeing the slides.
Really?
I'm not either.
What, I'm seeing them fine. What are you guys seeing, Penny and Jamie?
I see Carl.
Carl.
You need to just reduce your window. You probably.
Yeah, I just moved you guys off to the right is what I did.
Just shrink down out of full screen.
Whoops. Okay, I've got it now. You got to switch to screen share.
I don't see screen share.
Up in the left-hand corner of, it's where mine was.
If you're on your iPad, you'll have the, the pictures down below. If you just click on the picture with the secondary update, then you'll get that. So it should be the row at the bottom with everyone's picture. There's going to be one that shows secondary update.
I don't have that one.
Yeah, my, it's not on mine either.
Is there a, there's a little button that looks like a square within a square. It's like swap shared screen with video. I think you can.
Yeah.
Or seeing the, the video presentation. Do you see that somewhere in one of the screens, maybe?
Okay, I've got it.
Yeah. Got like a little arrow in the file form.
Yeah, it's on the left hand at the top.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
I'm glad, yeah.
Okay, so now you can't see me. That's great. Okay, so then just pointing out to you that we have received a variety of waivers and emergency guidelines from the state for all high school preparing courses. Generally speaking, the waivers apply to students who are on track to graduate this spring or summer, and emergency guidelines are for underclassmen. That's kind of a general good rule of thumb. They, they were very, very, very kind to current seniors to not want to hold them back from graduating. So they waived a whole bunch of requirements, and for underclassmen, they provided emergency guidelines for how to award standard credits and verified credits in a different way. And so there, I've tried to point out for you some of the things that were waived or for which we were given emergency guidelines. One is for all students, the 140 clock hour requirement was waived by the VDOE. So they're already, the VDOE is saying to us as, as school divisions across the Commonwealth, we don't have to worry about the 140-hour clock requirement. And I'm going to point out later how language in our policy actually already allows us to do that. For verified credits, the seniors, that's verified credit to remind you, is earned when the student passes the SOL test that goes with a certain course. And so for seniors, they're all waived. If a senior is in a course that has an SOL test, and they needed that SOL pass in order to graduate, they're, that requirement is just waived. They pass the course, they're fine. That comes from the state. For underclassmen, they've actually given us a, some guidelines to revise our locally awarded verified credit process, and we revised that process, and they have also allowed us to no longer apply that to the cap. There, without getting into all the nitty-gritty, there, there is a certain cap that, that students can earn based on the year that they entered ninth grade, for how much, how many of the verified credits can they apply LAVC to, and they're removing that cap for underclassmen during this crisis. Next slide. So here, I've just like taken a few lines out of very lengthy policies, and the, the policy references were, were on the previous slide, but just pointing out here that our current policies actually allow us already to do things other than impose the 140 clock hour requirement. The language in our policy says, upon recommendation of the division superintendent, we can actually come up with a way for students to demonstrate competency without the 140-hour clock requirement. And then later in the policy, it says that the Board of Ed may permit local school divisions to waive the 140 clock hour requirement, and the division superintendent by regulation will determine the manner in which that is done. And so that line, actually, that's what we're relying on. It says in our own policy, we can follow the Board of Ed guidelines when they permit us to waive those. And in fact, in this particular crisis, they have provided that guidance. So we are actually following our own policy by following the Board of Ed policy. Slide. Then from one of the other policies, I, sorry, I forgot the reference. It's on one of the previous slides. This has to do with the verified credits and, and other graduation requirements. And so our own policy says that upon recommendation from the division superintendent and for good cause, that we can request a waiver from the Board of Ed for certain graduation requirements. Well, we have the waiver, we just didn't have to ask for it. They, because of this crisis, the Board of Ed offered us, or all, all school divisions, the waiver. But our own policy says that in certain circumstances, or as it says for good cause, we would do that anyway upon recommendation of our own superintendent. And this one is, is leaves us wide open to, to revise our own LAVC process as we have done. Our, our policy already says that we can, or we will, award a verified credit for students who earn a standard credit and meet the, meet the criteria for receipt of a LAVC conferred in accordance with board criteria and guidelines. So the fact that the board has established emergency guidelines and we are following them, we are following our own policy, which says, we'll follow the board guidelines. And similarly, another statement talks about how we can award LAVCs to the, the following courses, again, in accordance with the Board of Ed's regulations and guidelines. They've altered those guidelines, and we are following them. Thereby, we're following our own policy. Next slide. And this one is from Dr. Wickham. She has, wants you to just know that she is doing basically the same thing, a little bit of an elementary spin on it. I hope I can do it justice. But basically, same thing. She, she did a similar survey. The, the secondary survey was a bit more complicated. Elementary does not deal with standard credits and verified credits, GPA and, and transcripts and, and final grade averages and those kinds of things. Instead, she, she just simply asked of the elementary folks, the elementary teachers, what did they think about using Q4 in the same way, which is informally assess and provide feedback, award a completion grade for Q4, and if that Q4 grade will raise the final grade, use it. And if it doesn't raise the final grade, then base the final grade on Q1, 2, and 3.
Mr. Polly, thank you. Could you do this? Could you remind, there's a lot of, a lot of terminology here that we use on a daily basis, that some, that, that war members may need to be reminded upon. The difference between a standard and a verified credit?
You want me to explain the difference between verified and standard? Sure. A standard, if you want to go back to that slide too, just so they can see it visually, Brenda, it's a slide or two back. A, a standard credit is what a student in a high school credit course earns just by passing the course. A verified credit is what the state awards a student when they pass the relevant SOL test. So if I take Algebra, Algebra I, and I get a passing grade, I get a standard credit. And then there are certain numbers of credits required for certain diploma types. And then the state comes in and says, for a certain number of courses, we want you to verify that credit by the student passing the SOL test. And then they, the state provides us and has for, as long as I can remember, I think back to 2000, that if a student does not pass an SOL test that they need, but they scored between a 375 and a 399, and they've taken it twice, then we can award what's called a locally awarded verified credit, and that is an LAVC. What they've done in the emergency guidelines is just change the criteria for the LAVC to not require us to have students even take the SOL test. We can base it simply on the student's grade.
Right, so basically, these students will receive a verified credit without taking the test.
That's correct.
Correct. What questions do you have about the grading? Any board members have any questions or comments?
I am happy that we are lenient, because even though we are trying so hard to teach online, obviously, conditions therein, we don't know. And the stress therein, we don't know. So we are flexible as much as state allows us. It's a good thing, and I appreciate. I know this has been a huge work to figure these out from my little Zoom attendance to principals' elementary secondary meeting, and the long, long discussions, what to do, how to do. And I appreciate all the effort put in.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Karan. It is a very, very complex issue that Mr. Polly and, and our folks and a lot of communication with the state, the Department of Education has done a wonderful job. Every Tuesday and Thursday morning, Dr. Lane, State Superintendent, has a webinar, and it usually lasts an hour and a half, and we've submitted questions, and folks across the state have them. And a lot of, a lot of questions about everything, but the DOE has done a great job. I would say that in this situation, and given this, given all school divisions really good guidance, and, and, but it's a complex issue when you start talking about grading and grade point averages and, and that type of thing. So, other questions?
Um, I'll just comment, I'll add that I've gotten some feedback from parents, and I think Carl and Barbara, that I, I think we're striking the right balance on this. I think it's a good thing, what we're doing. I mean, I understand that we're given a lot of leeway, but I think at this time, anyway, and given the speed at which we had to switch gears into this, I think it's, I think it's good, and I think it's probably contributing to less stress overall for our families and students. So I definitely appreciate that from the state. I do hear, in, in the same breath, and I think everybody's on board right now, in the same breath, I do hear that, you know, obviously, the, the workload for a lot of the kids has gone down. And so it'll be interesting next year, if we have to go through periods like this, how they may, that may change from the state. And, and I guess maybe as a question, since I'm not on these calls that you guys are on, what, has there even been talk about that? I mean, I know it's premature to some degree, but, but maybe not to start thinking ahead. We don't have that many school board meetings between now and the end of the year, right? But to think ahead to what, you know, next year might look like if we have a, you know, a small wave that comes up, and we have to do this for a few weeks or something like that, you know? We're worse.
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, and, and we were spoken to last week by the state epidemiologist, and in that presentation, she presented a model, the, the University of Virginia model that just came out, and it is very likely that might be the case, that either we don't start on time or there's going to be a time we would have to close again. And so what, you know, from that, we've already started preparing for that for the beginning of the school year, and not just preparing to do it like we, we're doing it now, actually preparing to, to, right now, we're not delivering any instruction via Zoom or Google Classroom. I am proposing, you know, and, and we're looking into how can we actually deliver instruction via Zoom or Google Classroom. And of course, the key to that is access to the internet. And so we are trying to prepare now several months in advance to possibly purchase more Mafa devices for, for homes that do not have internet access for the kids. We have, the good thing about this, we have an idea of how many homes that there actually are. And, and so we're trying to, you know, budget that item to see if we can actually make this work for all students of Montgomery County. The issue we're running into now is, is access to devices. A lot of these cell companies do not have the devices available, but you know, if we start putting an order in now, there's very likely we would have the devices we need to deliver instruction when school opens in the fall. So that's, we want to up this. I'll tell you this, something that we're going to try to do this summer in preparation to, to try to shoot holes in this, is we're, we're going to do summer school this summer via Zoom or Google, Google Chat and Classroom. We're going to do summer school where kids do not have to come in, and we do have enough Mafa devices to issue to kids for summer school this summer. Summer school probably, numbers will probably be down somewhat because of the, the situation, but we're going to allow kids to do summer school online this summer instead of bringing them in, into the building. And so it will be a great test to see how it actually works, and actually ask our summer school teachers to deliver that direct instruction.
That's great. I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're looking at that. Has the state given any indication at all about how they may react to any of this and what kind of, you know, I'm, I guess I'm assuming and hoping that they will relax some of, you know, some of the, the rules on this that will allow us to do more of that in the fall if we have to.
Yeah, you know, so far, they haven't let us down. And so I, I, you know, I trust they will continue to, because the, the biggest issue around the state, and in fact, this morning's webinar, they had this Superintendent for Technology, and he talked about the issues around the state in terms of internet, and different school divisions have different access, and different kids have different access, and they know that this is an issue. And, and they just, they challenge us to think outside the box to, to see what we can do to make it work for our kids. And so that's, that's the biggest issue, and it varies from division to division.
So how many children will we be able to serve with summer school?
We can probably serve as many as need to come to summer school. Knowing the number of students that already have internet access and the number of what Mafa devices we actually have, we'll be able to supplement the number of kids who come to summer school to make sure everyone can have access to online.
Okay, so with the situation that we're in, there may be a, a lot of students and their parents who may want their child to be able to do summer school. So what's the criteria?
Yeah, Carl, do you want to talk about that? Usually where we crack, where crack hits to actually fail a course, there's a couple of courses for acceptance too, Carl?
Yeah, so I've had meetings with Mike Stanley, who oversees is the principal of summer school, and Jason Garretson, who oversees the inner workings of, of summer school, and get Jason's on, on this doc right now or on, on this meeting, so he can jump in at any time. So basically, it's a, it's for repeat courses, students who have failed courses throughout the school year, particularly those that are graduation requirements, and would put them sort of on the, no longer on track to graduate, like they wouldn't be able to fit it into a schedule and graduate on time. So those kids jump in summer and repeat courses. English is a very common one. Math is another very common one. But we do offer several new courses. Traditionally, it is English 12 and Government for students who want to graduate early. We may see a, an increase in that, but I don't know that yet. I have Heather Duncan, my administrative assistant, is putting those numbers together for me for tomorrow, how many early grad requests we have. And then traditionally, the last couple of years. And then traditionally, the last couple of years, three, four years, we've been offering a new course in PE nine and in economics and personal finance.
Jason, do you remember any idea, well, of course, you're not a physician. Do we have any idea how many students took advantage of summer school last summer?
I don't.
I think Mike told us he had sixty students take repeat courses last year. I believe he said he had about twelve students do early graduation. I'm not sure about his PE numbers. I think he said he had close to a hundred do the online economics and personal finance last year.
Yeah, and any kind of personal finance is already an online class that we offer.
Yes, we, we may have some new options this summer that we, we're talking about using Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia is opening up lots of, including their, their platform that they use, their learning management system. So there's a lot of new stuff that's coming up that we really don't exactly know what we're going to use, but there are definitely increased options out there now.
Does that answer your question, Penny?
It does, but I just have a real concern about our students who may fall behind and not be ready to go to the next grade. And what do we do to help support them? Even though we may not know, you know, but students know and their parents may know.
Right.
You know, how do, how do they give, get input or get suggestions as to what they need to do? There may be tutorial programs that will pop up, folks trying to help address this issue. I don't know.
You know, and we can look into that and, and give, provide parents with resources in the summer as well if needed. You know, but I would say one thing that I'd say about our teachers, they're challenged everywhere, every year with meeting kids where they are, you know, at the beginning of the school year. They just have, may have to meet kids where they are this year, more kids that are behind. And because, I mean, they'll have kids coming to their class every, every, every year in August with, who are at different places in terms of, of learning. And, and, you know, that's something we'll emphasize is to make sure that they're covering those bases with, with those students. But we definitely could look at providing more resources for families during this time. And, and we'll, we'll know some of those gaps early on, especially in the elementary schools, right when we start, because there's some assessments that are, that, I don't know. Barbara, do you want to speak to this? This is a big elementary issue, that's for sure.
Absolutely. One of the things that we're doing at the elementary level right now is our curriculum administrators, they're going through and they're looking at the essential skills and the SOLs according to our pacing guides that would have been taught after the middle of March. They're identifying those skills, and then they're going through next year's pacing guides to see where they naturally fit, because in elementary, everything builds on a skill. You teach it one year, then it gets a little bit harder the next year and so forth. So what they're doing is mapping out those skills, connecting them to the next grade level and meeting with teachers to go through and revise our pacing guides for next year to make sure that we grab those skills as we go throughout the year in addition to the review that, that we have at the beginning of the year. We have those same concerns and feel like it's important that we go back and grab them throughout the year.
Okay, so with that, this also jogged my memory with one of the thoughts that I would have been thinking about, and I guess it's really related with budget, is there just may be a, a broader need with the, with what's going on as far as students needing more support and teachers needing more support in their classrooms to navigate where children are at? Because it just, I just think it's going to be at a different level than what we've seen before and could be overwhelming for the teacher to try to, maybe not overwhelming, because we've got some great teachers, but just a, a, I don't know the right word, I don't want to use burden, but, I don't know, it, that it just may be.
Extra support, definitely.
Yeah, extra support in the classrooms for our students and the teachers, at least through the first nine weeks.
Okay. We'll definitely monitor it and see how things are moving forward. Of course, time is going to give you an update on the budget too, and that's not great news either, getting that extra support. So, yeah, I know. I know. All right.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Carl, any other questions about grading? Carl's going to, I believe, move into other important topics like proms and graduations.
All right, so this, this is kind of short and sweet. We just want to make sure that you, you all are aware of what's going on. So we have provided all of our principals with guidance on making school level decisions relative to proms and graduation ceremonies. And these first four bullets are just sort of the way we've framed all of our surveys of folks and our conversations, just recognizing this is a difficult time for seniors. Proms and graduation ceremonies are, are certainly for, for, for many, if not all, students, the, just the pinnacle of, of their school career. And we recognize that these in-person graduation ceremonies and proms may not come to pass, but we're holding out hope. So we're, we, we have some plans we want to share with you. So if you go to the next slide, this is where we are with proms. We have, as I said earlier, left, left this to be a school-based decision, and these decisions have been made or in one case will be made based on input from schools, seniors, juniors, and other stakeholders. So if, just to summarize, Auburn, Blacksburg, and Eastman all have picked selected specific dates to say that if we definitely want to have a prom, they've committed to the students to say, we'll hold a prom. But like in the case of Auburn High School, if not by June twenty-seven, we will cancel in Blacks, at Blacksburg High. If not, if the restrictions are not lifted by July seventeen, they will cancel. And then Eastern Montgomery's is very specific. They actually were able to secure their original venue. It's on hold for July ten, but it's a tight venue to schedule. So if it doesn't happen by July, on July ten, it will be canceled. And I believe Mr. Dibler is just finishing up. He's wanting to be very thorough with collecting all kinds of input from, from all stakeholders, and he doesn't want to jump to a decision. So he's, he's saying he's certainly amenable to having one, even though it is unlikely, he wants to be open to the idea. And his survey results, I believe, as of today are in, and he's just looking at that to make a similar decision to the other three schools. On the next slide, for graduations, we will be meeting at the end of this week to hopefully come up with a decision. We are committed to having some type of graduation ceremony, whether it's virtual or drive-by, or I've, I've heard lots of different ideas. And one specific idea that actually Rona County is doing something very similar to the three bullet points there. We've surveyed our seniors specifically on this one, on a follow-up survey, to say, what do you think of this one? So we're sort of at that stage of planning where we're putting some specific ideas in front of stakeholders, asking what they think, and we're hoping that on Friday, with the list of all those people who will be on board at this meeting, to make a decision on not only the format, but also a date. And if you, you could certainly ask me or Dr. Meyer, we both are aware of the different iterations of a prom cer, I mean, a graduation ceremony that, that are sort of out there.
And, and there are several. There are some other graduation ceremonies that are taking place across the country that we like their ideas as well. There was one, I believe, that we saw that sparked our attention in Mississippi. Annie, did you send that one to me, I believe? Where basically, they, they're letting in the graduates and four family members. And there's a photographer there to video, someone who's videoing it. And they give the seniors a time to come, to actually come and get their diploma while across the stage, video it. And then they're actually putting, with, then they're doing the speeches and several other things. And then they're putting the video together as one, like it is one ceremony, and actually broadcasting it at the time of the actual ceremony. So that's another idea that may, may be able to work out. I'm asking Jason to, you know, he's in a meeting every, every morning with the health department to run that idea past them and, and, because there would be a lot of work in how we control that. And, but that's another, but we'll, we have a good group of folks on Friday that are coming together to talk about this. And, and, you know, hopefully, we can do something to celebrate our, our graduates. One challenge that we have too is, you know, there's a question of how, how long can we actually sort of drag it out? And, you know, maybe if the, if the restrictions are lifted in August, we can have an actual ceremony. You know, one disadvantage, I've been contacted by, by families where their, their senior will not be here during that time for various reasons, such as they're in the military and, and, and they're going to basic training and that type of thing. And, you know, my experience tells me that they're not going to let them come back for the graduation once they got them. So, you know, but, you know, we really need to be able to do, at least do something upfront where we can get everyone recognized. We definitely owe it to our senior class for that. So, any questions about that, about prom and graduation? Okay, excellent. Next, Mr. Knott here, we've had to make some adjustments in, in terms of how we handle HR matters, and he's here to discuss those.
So as you guys know, we have multiple types of leave that our employees can take. Several of them have limits on how many days can be carried over or if days can be carried over at all. And our policy, that should be seven dash five, seven point five, not five. I, that's a mistake on my part, sorry. But personnel leave can be accumulated up to five days for those that earn that. Annual leave, up to two years accumulation may be credited to an employee. And then wellness leave, when you earn it this year, it's, it's used next year, and it has to be used next year or you just lose it. In this time, with this pandemic that's going on, we, we believe many of our employees just aren't going to have the opportunity or want to, to take a vacation to use this leave, because they can't really travel anywhere and take advantage of it. We may have some that want to do staycations and just stay at home and take some time off, and that's fine. If they want to use it, they certainly can. But we also want to give them the opportunity to earn the leave that they had, to use the leave that they have earned. So we plan to next year allow employees to carry over any of the leave in those three categories that they could not use this year, that normally they may have lost into next year and, and use it during that time. We think this is just fair for our employees. We don't want to take something away from them because circumstances are out of their control and they just couldn't use them. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knott. Next, Ms. Whitaker?
Hello. So I wanted to provide you an update on our work locations. In an effort to enhance our social distancing and really stay in line with the guidelines that were being asked to put into place, we, starting effective yesterday on the twentieth, we put some additional measures into place. And so you can see there that, starting on Monday, what we did is we really kind of broke down into two groups. The first was those who have the actual ability to do the majority of their job from home. So those individuals who can work from home are now going to do so every day. We're going to ask that they do as much work as they can from home. If they have to go into the building, they would go into the building on the assigned AB day. You may, may remember, we spoke about those AB schedules before. So, you know, if you're on the B team, then you can go in the building to get things that you need or do things you must do, but only on that B day. Each building has a signup process so that you sign into the building so that we're sure that we know which areas need to be cleaned. And then we're asking individuals to wear masks in the common spaces. For those individuals who cannot complete their job at home, they are working their assigned AB, A or B day, and then they're following those same guidelines with wearing masks in the common spaces. And then, you know, of course, the COVID reporting that HR put into place a little while ago. So we really feel like that's helping to increase the social distancing. And those who have to be in the building, it's having them come into contact with less people on a daily basis.
Okay, and I apologize, I didn't ask you if you had any questions for Mr. Knott. Do you have any for Mr. Knott or Ms. Whitaker? Anyone? Okay, if there are none, Mr. Grants?
Yes, sir. Probably the biggest thing in the operations is we have been able to move within our transportation and school nutrition group to the AB schedule. And those have gone relatively well, and we're very happy and proud that we were able to accomplish that. In the transportation department, we've been able to consolidate our routes, reducing our number of buses from ninety per day to forty. Not only has that lowered the exposure of our employees, but it's also lowered our overall operating costs significantly. We have begun working on updating our routes and doing all of our functions within operations as if we're going to open on just August first, which is a date we picked and selected, so it's normalcy. School nutrition, we've served over two hundred and twenty-three thousand meals over a period of twenty-six days through eight, March, April twentieth. Right now, we're showing a net income from our operations of about twenty-five thousand dollars, which is four point two-two percent. We've done a great job of utilizing the product on hand, so we're not having to throw things away that may have been in our coolers and freezers. And we continue to look in that area where we can, our staff has done a tremendous job improving their efficiency and things that we maybe even do to lower the amount of staff, maybe do A one, A two days, or even do, you know, two or three days at one time from a production standpoint, with the goal of being, to do everything to ensure the safety of our, of our staff. Facilities, we've moved our teams away from the loading and unloading of buses. We started this week. The custodians have done a great job stepping in and taking over that function from us. That's allowed the facilities team to begin, go back and work on outstanding work order requests as well as tackling the issues for an opening of school. On the purchasing and warehouse function, we continue to work on getting PPEs such as the hand sanitizer and gloves. We are expecting tomorrow a large pallet of twenty-eight thousand masks to arrive so that we will have coverage for the rest of this period of time. We have begun rolling out the schools ordering the school supplies directly from Office Depot. We have two elementary schools that are in beta test, and those have gone extremely well. With the custodians, we work right now to ensure they're having all the products to clean the schools, not only during this time of the pandemic, but also for the upcoming summer season. On the budget side, on the FY twenty budget, we await to see what will be the impact to our budget on sales tax. What was the activity that occurred in March and April, we'll see in our payment in May and June. As a result of concerns, that we'll see a reduction. Dr. Meyer has undertaken an approach of conserving our cash. We continue to provide services where needed, but it's kind of like deciding between the need and the want. And that will allow us to have funds that could be carried over into FY twenty-one to meet whatever operational academic needs we have, may have in that year. We have recently learned that from the federal stimulus funds, our district is expected to receive one point five million dollars. The final numbers on those should be coming out literally within any day, as well as the rules and regulations associated with it. Prelimarily, it seems to be very open, and will give the superintendent a lot of leeway on how those funds can be used. One of the things, for example, that's been discussed tonight is technology, and that's definitely something that is those funds are intended to be used for. As we go into FY twenty-one, the state general assembly will convene tomorrow. It's not expected that they will vote on the budget. It's my understanding they intend to hold a summer, a special session here soon. The concern from the state side is, is sales taxes and what The concern from the state side is is sales taxes and what impact that will have on their budget. On the federal budget, we expect that that's going to stay fairly flat to what we project. But even with kind of the negativity or the uncertainty that's there, we believe with the one point five five billion that we asked from the county and which we understand will continue, it's the county's intent to continue to fund that, that we're in a position that the one percent, the the one percent raise for teachers, which will be through their steps, and then a one percent raise for all other employees, plus the move for the move to the thirteen dollars per hour for the custodians, the four new positions that those can be funded with the county's funds. From discussions we've had with the state, and it's not final until we see what the general assembly and the governor does. But we believe that the funds that we are expected to receive under our basic aid will be enough to continue to do what our goal was in the budget, which is fund the V R S employer contribution increase as well as no increase for employee health insurance premium. So at the end of the day, right now, we're very fortunate in that our budgets, both for F Y twenty and F Y twenty-one appear to be on solid footing, subject to, you know, things may change. But I think that we're in good shape going into the budget, upcoming budget season.
You know, the, I mean, it's unfortunate, it's very likely we will not be able to adopt the new teacher salary scale. But probably one of the most important things after we've worked on it so hard the last few years is to at least keep the current scale and having everyone move up the step. Because as some of you know, this was really lack of better word, messed up in past years, trying to get everyone back to the current, the correct step and that type of thing. So we're hoping we can at least do that with the current teacher scale. But, you know, there's still a lot up in the air. You know, we need the the locality to fund this, the additional one point five. And the state, there will be some cuts from our current projections. But the re-benchmarking was something that in the governor's new budget was not cut. And that's probably where we got most of our funding, is that correct, correct, Mr. Krantz?
Yes, sir.
Okay, of course, the the Care Act from the federal government and the possible, that was an estimate that we got, that we received the other day, the one point five million. That's important too, however, we need to be very careful on how we spend that money on recurring types of cost or expenses. And so, you know, the the biggest mystery right now is the sales tax. We should have a better idea in the next few weeks about that reduction in the sales tax, probably the first amount, because we're, we run about two months behind. And so if you do that, that math in terms of time, the the first bit of revenue we receive from the state in May should give us a possible estimate of how much we would lose in state's sales tax revenue for next year, or at least until businesses start opening back up again. So, Tommy, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, board, what question do you have, Mr. Krantz?
I have a question, Mark, or Tommy. How will this affect, you know, we had talked about the schedule change in the middle schools and providing teachers with the extra planning period, but that was going to require adding to staff. Is that going to be changed now or is that still going to happen?
Yeah, that's still going to happen because if you remember, we did that within our current budget. Basically, what we did is, yeah, that's within our current budget. We used basically lapse money that had been carried over for several years. So that is not, that is not needed to, yeah, to not do that. So we're, we're securing that, absolutely, that's important.
So I have a question, so I, and maybe this came up last time, but I think from our last meeting, it was a kind of a wait and see approach, I think. And I, it sounds like we're still in a wait and see with respect to both the state and our locality as far as the budget goes. How, and and I haven't looked, I haven't peeked ahead on our upcoming meetings and stuff, but is that, has there been any official change in our budget calendar then for how we, you know, plan to finalize the twenty twenty-one budget?
Possibly, it could, it could extend it an extra meeting. It's, it's going to be prob- what the, what the county is waiting on, they're waiting on what the state's going to do. And so the, didn't the general assembly go back today, Mr. Krantz?
They reconvene tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I'm sorry. They reconvene tomorrow, of course, they have the governor's proposal, and so we were waiting to see what they actually do. When they should be done in the next few days, that's the hope. And then, once they're done, we get what's called from the, from the D O E a cap tool. And that cap tool will determine, we can actually pinpoint how much money we'll receive from the state. Now, I'm guessing too that the, that the county is waiting to see how much money we get from the state also.
County scheduled to approve the budget on the thirteen, but they didn't. They just approved the tax rate and they didn't even say that they're not approving the budget. But, you know, when you watch their meeting, they didn't approve the budget. And now they're planning on, hopefully, next Monday, on the twenty-seventh, if of course they hear from the state between now and then. But I'm hoping, what is the last day, is May fifteen, they have to approve?
Yeah, I believe so. If I had to guess, because we had our liaison meeting last week with, with, with them. And if I had to guess, they're, they're probably going, they're not going to approve it to their first meeting in May. And so that probably, which is the, which is the day before our first meeting too, I believe. And, and so.
We're supposed to approve ours, May fifth.
It's probably going to be the following meeting. Hopefully, I can give you my proposal on May fifth based on all the new information. And we can do it by the second meeting in May. That is, it's pushing it back a, a meeting. But hopefully that works out. You know, it's important, of course, you know, one thing that the county doesn't deal with that we emphasized to them in our meeting last week is we issue our employees' contracts. You know, we have to issue, I mean, almost probably two thousand contracts. And so that takes a lot of time to get in the system and and to actually generate and and send out and get back. And, and so that's, that's obviously important for our folks to to see those contracts go out or salary notifications.
So we'll be all right to approve our budget May, May nineteen?
That's the hope.
Okay, you know, I mean, I, I was worried that we're kind of pushing it too late in the May for, you know, contract purposes.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, of course, contracts are are until June thirtieth, but obviously, folks, much sooner. You know, probably, you know, as for now, you know, we do have new employees that are coming on with us. And all we've done is promised them a job, but of course, it's a lot more comforting to our new employees when they actually get that contract in their hands. And especially during these times. And so it's going to be pushing it for HR, but, you know, it's, it's to do it that way. HR and and finance will have to be putting in a lot of hours to get those done, but, you know.
You know, this, this wouldn't be the first time that we've had to send out a letter saying we want you, but until we find out what the numbers are, exactly what, you know, we're offering.
Yeah.
Right. This is sort of takes me back to two thousand eight, that's what this is. It's unfortunate.
Well, here in Virginia, we've had more than just two thousand and eight. Just we could not agree, the state could not agree on what they were going to do.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true. Any other, yeah, any other questions to anybody?
Ms. Karan, before we move on, I meant to do this right at the beginning and 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 I failed to mention, I was notified that we have a large group of students that are watching us tonight. I'd like to recognize three forty-four of the scouts who are watching us to earn their citizenship in the community merit badge tonight. So I'm going to say hi to all those students, everybody want to wave to the students?
I'm so glad.
Yes, so thanks for watching, guys.
Acknowledging that.
Thank you.
Thank you for watching. Well, if there are no other questions, we are then moving to unfinished business. Are there any matters of unfinished business for members?
I just have one question. I don't know if this is unfinished business or just a question. I've been asked by a couple of of parents as to when we would have a meeting where there would be like a public forum. Is that something that will happen or we're just, we're not going to be able to do that?
You know, I, I really don't know that we'll be able to do that until guidelines are lifted by the governor.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Yeah.
These people have asked.
Yep. And until we can actually probably go back to regular business, because we do have a lot of items that we would like to bring to you.
Holding him.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do that, unfortunately.
Right, because we've been instructed to only carry out our meetings in in there and have what's required for business to proceed.
Yep.
I understand, but I, I don't want a twenty-four hour meeting to get all that stuff out.
Right, right, it's, you know, we, we will, yeah, some things will have to, you know, there's nothing that I can think of that's major that we need to get in front of you. So, but there are some things and we're not going to do it all at one time. We'll, we'll pace ourselves with the understanding that this has happened. Some things might have to wait and that's okay. Anything, we'll prioritize it, but no, I have no desire either, Ms. Franklin.
Not a twenty-four hour.
Right, right.
Four hour meeting.
We, we talked about that last, last time, and I think where we left it was that we, we couldn't do anything because of the state guidelines right now. But I thought that there was, at least we were holding out a little bit of hope, maybe that the, that the state, i- if this extended well into June, that the state might give us, us, meaning giving all the school boards some leeway and and in doing that. Have you, in your meetings with the, with the state, Mark, have you heard anything, has that come up at all?
No, not, not, it really hasn't come up. Anytime a question like that comes up, the response is contact their school board attorney. Pretty much, I mean, that's, they're not touching that pretty much at the state level, the D O E. So hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll see as we move forward how things progress. At some point, we're going to have to, you know, do other things as well.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we need to find a venue for people, I guess, well, I guess, even if it's writing in, but for them to provide any thoughts or commentary.
Yeah, you know, folks can, you know, I would still encourage folks to to email the school board. You know, just email, they have questions, thoughts, whatever, about anything. An email is, is, is good, is, is good also. They, you know, just include all the, all the school board members and email the school board if they have anything. That doesn't stop us from doing that right now. I mean, they're still conducting business and we're, we're still moving forward and and things happen every day and and, but no, encourage folks to email you guys, I think that, that works also.
We just, we just, we just cannot accommodate in person coming and saying as something. Obviously, we don't use the government building at all. And it's hard to do it in a virtual form. But again, yeah, they definitely can reach out, we.
We did, when you think about it, Ms. Karan, that's what we did just now with the public hearing on the budget. We asked folks to write in, you know, they can write in what they were going to say. I, I think that's, that's acceptable.
And that's how board of supervisors are functioning, that's what they do also. They did that for their public hearing for the advertised tax rate as well, so. If nothing else, I'm moving on new business. Any new business for members? How about announcements and information? Unfortunately, not going anywhere to let you know what is going on out in the world.
Actually.
Oh, good, go for it.
I, I don't know, I don't know if anybody knows this, but I actually have taken a new position at Virginia Tech. And I am now the H R generalist for the Hume Center and the Commonwealth Cyber Initiative, which is a, a group of very technology-based group that focuses on national security and cybersecurity. But I'm back to my H R roots, so. Great. A couple of weeks ago, so I just wanted to let everybody know that I do have that, that I am in a new role, so.
Congratulations.
That's great.
Great. If nothing else, so you'll see the agenda preparation. Let's see. Yes, we have, the next meeting is May fifth and then we have May nineteen. And at one point, we are also going to talk about the school board retreat and what we're going to do. Superintendent's Dr. Meyer's evaluation, but we, we have a couple more meetings, so put that on the agenda and discuss how we're handling.
Yeah, could that be a waiver this year?
As long as, this is a good waiver.
That's right. We'll just status quo, you know.
It definitely hasn't been status quo this, that's for sure. And so I like to add something to the closed session that which I was just made aware of late this afternoon in terms of a, an employee matter. Mr. Ray, can you do that for me? Do you have to do anything now?
Well, when I'm entering the closed session, I will read as one personnel matter and, or two personnel matters, then it will cover. Am I right, Brenda?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So ready to enter the closed session? Our next order of business is closed session, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss two personnel matters as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of Court of Virginia?
So moved.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in closed session.
Any final words for our live viewing audience before I turn off the camera there?
They said.
Thank you for listening, be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.